Good morning. I'd like to call the Tuesday, May 12th, 2020 Reno County Commission to order please. This morning, we have with us Tim Craft to give our prayer. So if before that, we will stand due to the Pledge of Allegiance, then we'll have Tim Craft with First Church of God lead us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Thank you, Lord, for another day. Thank you for always being with us, no matter what. Thank you for this great county and great nation. Truly, we are blessed. I know that the coronavirus has rocked our boat, but we know it's not rocked you. The Bible tells us that the world is firmly established. It cannot be moved. So, Lord, in these difficult times, we realize our need and dependence upon you. I ask you for your direction and wisdom for our county leaders. Bless them, guide them, and lead them in your truth because we don't know the outcomes, and you do. So, Lord, be our light and our guide. You are God, our Savior, and our hope is in you all day long. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim, for being with us this morning. Okay, next, we'll have a COVID-19 update from the Health Department. If Nick and Adam are outside, please come in. Nick, have you been asked to leave very many meetings lately, like I did this morning? Too many people in the room?
No, usually nobody asks me to leave. So, it's a nice change of pace. Good morning, Commissioners. Nick Baldetti, Reno County Health Department, appointed Health Officer, Reno County. I'll give you a quick sit rep and then I think, or a situation report, and then a couple of topics that were asked of me to discuss. So, very quickly, as of this morning, 8:05, the United States is up to 1,347,936 cases with 80,684 deaths. The state of Kansas, and I will... Let me pull that up. I'm sorry. I want to make sure I give you the state of Kansas's numbers. Okay. As of yesterday, the state of Kansas has registered 7,116 cases with 158 deaths, 660 requiring hospitalizations statewide. For Reno County, we've held steady at 41 cases for a couple of days. We have still had no deaths... Excuse me. We've still had no deaths. We've now had 38 recovered, so we have a total of three active cases. In total, this includes the drive-through Walmart testing. We've ran a total of 1,079 tests in our community with 1,038 of those negative, coming back negative. That's a positive test rate of 3.8%. So, we continue to decrease in our positive test rate from a few weeks ago, which is good news. And then we've tested a total of 1.72% of Reno County's population as of this morning. Also, we continue to get activity through the self-report form that was developed about a month and a half to two months ago. We've had a total of 88 self-reported, and we're now down to one case through that self-report form. I'm sorry, 88 that have self-identified through the self-report form. We've had a total of 111 people use that form. One is still classified as suspect through that form. Just a few things on the Reno, the Reno County dashboard that's available on the renogov.org coronavirus landing site. We continue to update and expand the metrics that are available to the public. So, I would just encourage anyone to go out there. But more specifically, we just, we just created a new tab called Reno Tests where we differentiate the, what is affectionately called the Walmart testing site at the state fairgrounds outside. Well, we break those test results out of the total aggregate number of testing we have. And that's on a new tab we have called Reno, Reno Tests. Outside of that, I was asked by Commissioner Sellers to maybe discuss a little bit on the state of Kansas's, on their dashboard, and specifically on their dashboard, they have a section called reopen Kansas metrics, which seeks to track the metrics that are laid out by the governors, by the governor in her phased reopening plan. Again, that's disease spread, hospital, hospital admission, and then, and then deaths associated with COVID-19. As of this morning, the disease spread, and I'm sorry, I can't put it up here, but essentially, the disease spread, what, what we want to see is a decreasing regression line. That indicates the slowdown in disease spread. Again, this is number of aggregate cases and symptom onset is what's being measured by the state. And so, by the date of symptom onset is where they're developing this regression line. And if it's, if it's going down, that's good. That means a slower disease spread. If it's going up, it means we have an increase in activity in terms of number of cases day over day by symptom onset. As of the most recent day, they have is May 6th, and right now, and actually, I'll just visually show you, there's just a slight increase in trend line, that yellow line.
Thank you.
That shows an increase. So, that is the disease spread metric. Again, if we, so below that one on the website, you can actually break it out by specific county. And I am happy to say that for Reno County, our related regression line has a steep decline.
Oh, that's great.
Compared to the statewide number of spread. So, again, the statewide obviously is the state in total, in aggregate, taking into account all the hotspots that we have in hot counties, so to speak. And then that would be specific based off of, the Reno County trend line would be specific in terms of symptom onset date towards the investigations that we're conducting here in Reno County. Additionally, hospitalizations in terms of number of hospital admins for the state is on a, is on a strong decrease, strong, strong decreasing regression line, as well as, as well as deaths. Well, I say as well as, deaths is more plateaued, but it has a very slight decrease. So, there's movement in terms of decreasing as well. So, I can't speak for the governor's office and the decisions that they decide to make, but there certainly, statewide is evidence of spread via the metrics that they're reporting, but hospital admissions and mortality tracking seem to be, seem to be tracking nicely, being favorable in terms of the activity we're seeing in the state. So, Commissioner Sellers, Chairman Sellers, is that, is that generally what you want?
Yeah, that's pretty much what I wanted you to cover. There seems to be continued hotspots in the state that are making these numbers exaggerate some of the, the majority of the county numbers, correct?
Yeah. There was a, there was some activity that I've had some discussion, discussion publicly and certainly internally. The Kansas Department of Health and Environment made the decision on May 7th as well to begin to include probable cases in addition to laboratory confirmed. And I'll, I'll be honest, there was no real communication in terms of that new methodology of counting cases. They had one day where the public release that they sent out differentiated the laboratory confirmed counts and the probable counts, and the very next day, they just have a aggregate count. Now, they do have an asterisk that seeks to explain the infusion of those probable cases in addition to laboratory confirmed, but Adam and I continue to kind of seek greater information justification for the infusion of the probable cases and the methodology behind adding that to the, to the case counts for the state of Kansas and then for locals that, or for local counts. If you were to go out onto the state's website right now, as opposed to our dashboard, we're reporting 41 total cases with three active. And if you go to KDHE, they have us listed at 52. And that, that difference is KDHE counting 11 probable cases. Now, those probable cases, excuse me, those probable cases are identified via disease investigation here at the local level, but again, the, the decision to count them in total counts at the state level is, we're still seeking an explanation on that. So... I just had a few notes. I think I, I guess I have maybe one or two comments on the E-True North Walmart drive-through testing site. I just want to reiterate, I've been receiving a lot of communication. I just want to reiterate that that testing site was not, is not administered by the Reno County Health Department. That is a program that is a partnership, partnership between the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, and it is funded by Walmart, and the lab that Walmart has partnered with for that is E-True North Labs. Reno County doesn't have anything to do with that testing site. In fact, I would venture to say that they just kind of showed up. And so, we continue to work with the challenges associated with that in terms of timeliness of reporting results. I was on a phone call this weekend trying to hammer out some of those challenges. I would say some of which I think we're making ground on, but there's still many questions. Well, I still have, I still have many questions with regard to, with regard to the, that testing site, so.
Nick, have you heard of anybody that's received their results back from that testing?
So, I, I haven't had anyone reach out to me personally or professionally via email and say, "I've, I have gotten my result." But I do know via third party, so like employers have been in communication with me, saying that they have staff that have received their test results. Unfortunately, I was dealing with a situation today where we, we had an aspect of a forged result, and so I had an employer that was asking questions in regard to how to institute plans and operations effectively. But unfortunately, we tracked it down, and it's a, it seems to be a forged, a forged result.
How do you forge a result?
In this particular instance, it looks like someone copied and pasted the language from the actual, the actual result document into another document and edited it to say what they wanted it to say. And then it raised some questions because some of the communication that was being relayed to the employer in terms of communication, quote unquote, communication from the health department was not synchronous with standard Epi guidelines in terms of what we would communicate, which raised flags. And then I spent some time last night digging through that and kind of came to the conclusion that it looks like someone was forging a test result. So, so anyway, but, but anyway, I just, I just wanted to clarify that, that, you know, we continue to try and work with KDHE and E-True North in terms of the application of that drive-through testing site, but that is not administered or quite frankly, championed by, by Reno County in any way. So, I would stand for any questions or let Adam submit his report or whatever.
Well, obviously, to me, and I think the other commissioners would agree, but I'll let them speak for themselves. I think that our minimal degree of cases in Reno County has been due to Nick, you and Adam taking charge on this and being very, very active and very involved, speaking to the public. And we're at a very, very good place here in Reno County. My only hope would be that people still realize that the virus is out there and stay away from people and do the things that they need to do so that this won't spread from here. There's an awful lot of people seem to be not social distancing and taking advantage of things that we've suggested to keep them safe. And I think that's our highest priority is to try to keep the population safe. And I hope that the population will understand that safety is the most important thing here.
I would certainly agree with that. It's not a time to drop everything. It's time to continue this for a while longer. And remember that.
Bob, you've been in all these meetings and so forth. What's your thoughts at this point?
So, just real quick on the Walmart testing. Have any of those tests come back positive?
No, none of the, so, we have not received the testing results, at least to the Health Department of the, this last, well, it was just a Thursday and Friday, right? They did not test on Saturday. So, the last Thursday and Friday, but from the week, the first weekend, we've received 126 of those results. I'm still trying to confirm. We were, we were told that we were waiting for 167 tests, and we received 126. And I'm trying to confirm whether the difference is simply out-of-county residents traveling to go get tech, because they'll take anybody. It's not just Reno County constituents that they'll test. But I haven't been able to seek confirmation on that difference and whether those are just out-of-county individuals. If that's the case, it may very well be that because of their home residence that's on file, they've been allocated to the specific county for which their home, their home residence resides, their home address resides. But again, it would just be nice to have that confirmation, so.
Again, I know you've said this in other meetings, but a lot of people aren't privy to these meetings. Could you just reiterate real quickly what you would want a Reno County citizen to do if they thought, if they were showing some sort of symptomology, if you don't want them to go to the drive-up testing, what would, how would you want them to handle that?
Yeah, the preference would be kind of, the standard practice is to call a primary care physician to seek consultation with the symptoms that they're presenting. I think we're in a much different place than we were about a month, month and a half ago, in that quite frankly, and I've heard verbatim that Prairie Star and Hutch Clinic will essentially test anybody. So, if they simply make a phone call and make contact with one of those two medical facilities, they will schedule you in and get you in for a test. Now, again, those, the COVID-19 tests are covered, I believe, under the, it might not be the exact act, but it's one of the legislative actions by the federal government. It's, it's, there's no fee for an actual test. Now, if there's a, if there's a consultation, there might be like a $25 administration, administrative fee if there's a physician consultation in association with the administration of a swab. But the actual test itself and the running of the test, right now, it's averaging about $80 sending a test specimen to a private lab. That, that is not being charged to the client. And if for some reason it is, that client can go back to their healthcare provider and resubmit that to the healthcare provider. That healthcare provider can make that claim for COVID-19 reimbursable expense. It should not fall upon the, upon the patient. But again, getting back to your question, call a primary care physician and/or simply if you don't have a primary care physician, the simple, the simple act of calling the respiratory clinic at Hutchinson Clinic or the federally qualified health center, which is Prairie Star Medical Center here in Reno County, they will see you. They will get you in, and they will get you tested if, if you desire a test, quite frankly. Anymore, they're, they're, they're almost at the point where if you want to get tested, they'll test you. So, just have to call.
In regards to the governor's decision, that's going to be made this week. That's going to impact us all when we move to that next phase. I understand that the governor's moved her calls to Monday, Wednesday, Friday, three times a week, which makes you feel like that's a loosening up and a level of comfort with, where the state's headed since she's not doing this every single day. But at the same time, I read on Hutch News about the governor reportedly being unhappy with some county restrictive policies that are out there. And again, you've got the statewide trend going up, which was one of their variables, but many of the counties have no cases, as Commissioner Hurst has pointed out, and we have a downward trend. Where's this going to wind up, do you think? Is this going to be a Thursday, 6 o'clock meeting? And we just wait and see to what shows up because...
I, I think, well, there's, there's a few things in there.
A lot of things in there.
You know, and I think, Adam, are you, are you planning to discuss the Monday, Wednesday, Friday transition? Okay. All right. Well, so, we were, it was communicated over the weekend that KDHE and, and basically Topeka was going to move from daily updates to, they were going to provide updates Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. The rationale that we were given was, was it directly from Secretary Norman, Adam? Okay. The quote was something to the effect of, "They want to focus on disease investigation, and it takes roughly 10 hours of work to get that data ready every day for public consumption." And so, they are going to be moving to Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays to try and focus more on epidemiological investigation versus trying to crunch numbers every day. And so, now there will be a Monday, Wednesday, Friday report from, from the state, and then, you know, we'll go from there. But that, that essentially was the rationale that was communicated down via traditional channels to the local level. To your, to your other question, I think truly the only thing we have to rely on is prior precedence in that I suppose that I am not expecting anything before Thursday. And if, and if we actually get something during the workday hours, meaning 8 to 5 on Thursday, I'll be very surprised. I mean, it's Tuesday, but there was no, I mean, there was no real hinting or inkling in terms of where, where we're going, decisions to be made. So, unfortunately, I think myself as the health officer and the public health department is just as much as in the dark as the, the general layperson in terms of what the direction from the state is coming right now. So, we're going to be reacting at the same time. I think everybody else hears it, unfortunately. So...
Final thing, and I appreciate the commission's patience. So, one of the issues that keeps coming up, especially with the opening of restaurants and a number of retail stores, are individual businesses that are not in compliance with the perception of like six-foot distancing, six-foot tables, and things like that. Are staff going out and starting to gently work with business owners and to review their businesses? Or are you only because of the potential workload responding to the call-ins, the number that you have?
So, right, right now, we're, we're getting mainly call-ins about...
About how many?
It's probably averaging about two to three a day right now. It's, it's not egregious by any stretch.
Okay.
Which is, which is nice. You know, nice for me and nice for staff. But, but essentially, we're starting with a phone call, and generally, those phone calls are received very well. We certainly have some atypical circumstances where they're not very friendly. But generally speaking, everyone is extremely amenable and understanding and wants to work, and wants to work within the constructs of trying to, you know, illustrate an element of compliance with the governor's order. But we've really, I can only think of two circumstances where it is escalated to requiring onsite visitation. And again, that, that first onsite visit by staff is simply a, "Let's have a conversation." You know, you know, "This is what we're hearing. These are the concerns that are being communicated to us, and how can we help you, or how can we help educate you?" But we haven't, we've only had one circumstance, which actually was outside of the phased order. We only had one circumstance where law enforcement was called, and that was during the actual stay-at-home shutdown. We weren't into phase one of the governor's plan yet. And we didn't necessarily reach resolution there, but at the same time, we didn't, we didn't shut anything down either. We just continued to educate, and then we, we, we had law enforcement, law enforcement visit the site as well. But again, there, there was no, there was no enforcement activity, so to speak, in terms of, you know, law enforcement taking anybody into custody or shutting down a place or anything like that. It's, it's very much educate, communicate. The last thing that we want to do is go in with a heavy hand and, and force somebody to shut their door or, or say that they can't conduct commerce. Everyone's trying to make a living right now, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr....
I just have one question. Could you help define what a probable case is? I think I know, but I'd rather have it come straight from you.
Yeah, yeah. So, probable case are those, we don't have as many now as we did at the initial onset of the response. And the, the reason for that is because, if you remember, which seems like way back when, but just a few months ago, testing availability was a serious issue. In some respects, it still is, but in a different manner now. Testing was being very restricted to very specific symptomology. And so, those who got tested and laboratory confirmed met some of those criteria to be tested. A probable case was identified in someone that had high-risk exposure or contact to a laboratory test confirmed, but was not then tested themselves due to the testing restrictions that were placed by CDC and this, and the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. So, those, those probable cases are those listed as high-risk exposures at the time did not have access to testing.
Thank you. Nick, since you believe that, and what we're hearing nationally is that to better understand where we're at in the spread of this, that we need additional testing, and you're suspect of some of the testing going on as being accurate, what would you suggest that Reno County should be doing to better test our individuals? Or it seems like if, if we're concerned that we're not getting accurate information, what is our proactive situation to get good information for Reno County?
Yeah. Well, I think there, there's two avenues there. There's the, there's the ability of the, the lay individual, the lay constituent to add to accurate information. And, and that, again, I echo what I've been advocating for, for a few days now, is I have a strong preference that an individual go get a nasopharyngeal swab test, a PCR test administered by a medical professional versus leaning onto the Walmart self-administration of just a basic nasal swab. That, that's what, that's what a Reno County constituent can do. The other is, and I've had conversations with County Administrator Randy Partington and Adam, we continue to, you know, monitor the, the resource allocation that we can receive through emergency management channels. But the other aspect of that is if we get to a place where we could make specific requests for a testing allotment that we could receive on a daily or some routine basis, and we could do some, some population sample testing in our community to, to better capture data, which would, you know, essentially, you know, I guess if I were to suggest, my preference would be that if we had an allocation specifically to those testing capacities, that we specifically go out to communities in our, in our municipalities in our community, and we test... go out to communities in our, in our municipalities in our community, and we test simply asymptomatic individuals. Anyone with, with symptoms can call a, a primary care physician and, and get in and get tested. But if we, if we very strategically went to each community and we, we tested an asymptomatic sub-sample of the population, and then we measured the positive test rate that we see there, that would give us some really good information. You know, there's a few, there's a few roads that could, that could perpetuate there. We could be testing asymptomatic individuals and see it everywhere, and we could just, we could just make in confidence the statement that it's been here, it's here for, it's been here for a while, it's walking around. But generally speaking, for our population, it tends to be a minor inconvenience in terms of upper respiratory presentation with very, very small percentage of our population being, being so ill that they require hospitalization. The converse of that, which would be much more troubling, is if we were to conduct a, a subsampling project, if you will, such as that, and we don't get hardly any positives at all, which would then suggest that the activity we're seeing is indicative of the severity of the illness itself, which is, you have the, you have the SARS-CoV-2 viral body, and then the illness associated with that virus is COVID-19. And COVID-19 as the illness is what generates the concern in terms of the mortality rate that we're seeing at a national, at national level and a statewide level. National rate is, oh, I could, well, anyway, I just know for the state of Kansas, we're still hovering about a two-point, let's just round down to 2% mortality rate. But if we were able to really do a robust asymptomatic testing study, if we saw that there was a strong prevalence of asymptomatic COVID-19 walking around, we could significantly decrease that case fatality rate metric, which would then decrease, in my eyes, the concern associated with the unknown of just how severe is this going to be impacting our population as a whole. Again, the converse of that is if we find none of it, then there's a real concern that it hasn't even spread yet. So, anyway.
Okay, thank you. Adam, do you have things for us this morning? Please?
Good morning, Commissioners. Just a few things for you this morning. One of them is our local public health emergency that was declared all the way back on the 19th day of March is set to expire on the 18th. So, I would like to extend, or have the commission extend that proclamation for a period of 60 days past the May 18th deadline. So, it pushes us out into about July, and I sure hope that we're not up here every Tuesday in July to talk about it. So, Mr. Sullivan drafted a resolution for us to extend that public health emergency for an additional 60 days. So, that's, I have that here.
I'm not, I'm not sure that the individual commissioners have a copy of that, do you?
There's a copy for us to sign, and I'm intending to put that on a Action Item 7D.
And the purpose of this is...
So, the purpose of this, it, it puts us into a state of emergency. So, it activates our response recovery portion of our emergency operation plan. It also qualifies us for FEMA funding, and then it also ups our, our general liability. So, we're basically put ourselves in this disaster mode, and it qualifies us for several things.
I think, is that sheet of paper underneath there?
Oh.
Chair, you said you were going to add it as an action item for today?
Yes.
Okay.
7D.
I guess this is a dumb question. Is there any reason why I wouldn't do this? It sounds to me like this is just better for...
I, I don't see...
I just see advantages to this. Is there any reason why you would not want to do this?
I don't see any reason not to do it. Even, even on a normal disaster, a normal proclamation, having one of these in place really protects us. If we don't need it, it's, we don't use it. It doesn't do anything that, that would hurt us in the long run if we have it in place. If we don't have it, that's what could hurt us.
And COVID-19 is automatically considered this?
Correct.
Considered for emergency declaration?
So...
By the state's and, state's and feds?
That's correct. So, COVID-19 has already been declared a state emergency, as well as it's been approved for a federal emergency. What that means for us is a state emergency, as soon as we hit our threshold, which is just $243,000 and some change, and the state hits their threshold of just over $4 million, that qualifies the state for federal money. So, the federal, the, the federal reimbursement that comes in will be under category B, which is protective measures. Those are your sneeze guard, those are your thermometers, that's your personal protective equipment that, that everyone's using. It qualifies not only the county, but it qualifies the city, our nonprofits, and anyone who really has a stake in this, doesn't own a for-profit business. So, we, we submit those through the state who goes to the federal government. The federal government will pass down 75% of approved expenditures to the state. The state generally tacks on 10, an additional 10%, and then sends that money back to the county for distribution. So, having this in place is what qualifies us initially for that reimbursement.
Okay, good. So, this helps take care of some of the costs that the county has had, plus the city, plus hospitals and so forth, that, where that would be going?
Correct. This, this takes care of a lot of the cost. Like I said, we're, we're looking at 75% of, of approved expenditures, and it's a reimbursement. So, it could be a while before we see this money. I know, talking, talking about our other, other federal disasters, our October flooding last year, we, we still haven't seen money from that. So, I'm, I'm telling people, you know, it, it could be a couple of years after this disaster period actually ends before we see a reimbursement from it, but we do expect to see something from the federal government.
It might even be longer than that, since you're going to have every state in the country applying, as opposed to, you know, states with fires, or earthquakes, or tornadoes, or things like that, so...
Correct. This, this one's, this one's completely outside the norm.
Yeah, and everybody's going to be applying.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, is the money you're talking about that would be reimbursed, is that different than what our county administrator is going to talk about in his comments of the 1.25 billion that the state has been given by the federal government?
Yeah, th, those are two different pots of money.
We got two different, okay, we're not talking about that with this reimbursement.
Correct. Those, those are two completely separate items.
Okay, we'll let Randy talk about that later. Okay, thank you.
Other than the disaster proclamation, what I want to touch on is there's currently 88 other counties that are under a public health emergency. Of those counties, 83 of those have positive COVID-19 cases. KDHE is monitoring 78 clusters through the various counties. We are not one of those. Severe weather is supposed to be moving in tonight, and then overnight, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So, there's been a lot of questions coming into my office, hey, what, what are we going to do with storm shelters? Or, I usually, I live in a mobile home, and I have to go to this community shelter, can I go there? And the answer is yes. What I'm encouraging people to do is deal with the disaster that is happening now, keep your family safe, and then worry about the social distancing and all the other things that we've been pushing after your family's safe. So, we're going to be sure that you're taking care of that severe weather and sheltering place, just like you do any other severe weather season, social distance if you can, but if you can't, be sure that you're safe.
Sure.
Other than that, our PPE burn rates are due to the state tomorrow. So, we're still waiting on PPE burn rates from several of our agencies across the county. So, if you're listening, I just encourage you to, to submit those to me today, so I can put all the numbers together tomorrow.
How are we doing with PPE burn rate?
So, we're, we're doing good right now. We have approximately a 30-day supply. The state has changed their guidelines yesterday, which could make it a little more challenging to, to us. They've now opened it up for all dental offices. So, we're not really sure what that looks like at this point. Up until yesterday, the only qualifiers were, you could be a long-term care facility, a medical provider, or a first responder, and that's who the county had to support for the personal protective equipment. Yesterday, they have now included dentists in there, but it has to be in direct relation to a, a COVID patient. So, we're not exactly sure how to, how to vet those, or exactly what that looks like for dental offices. And then, our, our concern is if they're opening up to dental offices now, are they going to start opening it up to eye doctors, to chiropractors, et cetera? I'm a one-man shop, I'm not sure where it stops.
Hairstyles. They're close. Massage.
We're not sure where it stops at this point. So, right now, we're doing okay, but I'm not sure what's going to happen once these floodgates open.
Do you have any idea what a dental procedure that's related to COVID-19 would look like?
So, they tried to define those yesterday, and they're saying it's not cosmetic surgery, but if someone has to come in to get a cleaning, they think that's going to be covered. So, there's really been, there's no clear guidelines set yet, but like I said, I'm just concerned where, where this is going to stop on, once they open up the door.
Is this coming from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment?
Yes, sir.
You'd think they'd have enough things going on without creating new issues.
Yeah, I just, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you both. Nick has another comment to make.
Yeah, sorry, Commissioners. Nick Baldetti, Reno County Health Department. I forgot to mention as well, I've been in discussion with County Councilor Joe Sullivan and District Attorney Keith Schroeder. We originally were drafting a rescension, or, to rescind prior health orders administered by Reno County, myself. But our, our understanding is that the governor's executive orders in phase circumvent any health order. The reason being that we were discussing in part was to, to remove a prior travel restriction and quarantine aspect of health order 20-01 here locally. But my understanding, and Joe, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that we're circumvented by the governor's executive orders that nullifies local health orders, and so that, that travel restriction is essentially nullified. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, anyway, I just wanted to publicly state that. We've been getting a lot of questions. I was going to look to rescind that health order, but it seems like a moot point right now with, we're, we're all operating under the governor's executive order administration. So, anyway, that, that's my only comment.
I got a quick, I got a quick question for you.
Yeah.
You and I talked two weeks ago about you taking some afternoons to spend working from home with your family. Have you had a time to take a break?
Not much.
Well, I really want you to consider doing that, because this is going to go through June, July, and maybe through the fall again, but you ought to take some breaks and give yourselves some family time, okay?
Well, I appreciate it. I'll, I'll make sure to communicate with Administrator to make sure that that's, that that's scheduled appropriately. Randy's been, I mean, he's been amenable when I, when I've come and talked to him, so...
We need you to 100% for a couple of months.
Sure.
So, if you take those breaks, you'll be able to hit that level.
Sure. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That always takes some time, but I think it's probably the most important part of our agenda, and I assume that the people that's listening at home to our meeting is interested in this. So, I think the time is well spent. Item three, determine additions or revisions to the agenda, other than putting the disaster resolution on the agenda at 7D. Is there any other revisions or agendas to the agenda necessary?
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Randy?
Should I?
I do. I would like to, at the end of your meeting here this morning, I would ask for an executive session to discuss a privileged, a legal matter with counsel, that being real estate tax foreclosure.
Okay, that would be item 9A. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda, including the disaster resolution and the executive session as proposed?
So moved?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, item five is a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda submitted by staff?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. That would include vouchers in the amount of $386,695.07. Is there any discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving right along to item six, public comment. I think we do have some public comment this morning, and I appreciate the patience of those here to make public comments, waiting 45 minutes to speak to the commission. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to make a public comment to the commission, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit, limit your comments to less than five minutes, please.
Good morning. My name is Angela Mans, and I live at 14918 East Maple Grove Road. I first wanted to thank you guys for the countless hours of dedicated service you have spent protecting the health and welfare of the citizens of this county through this pandemic. I know that it has really been a challenging time, and if you have had to make many difficult decisions, I'm coming to you today to ask you to consider making another decision to protect the health and welfare of those that live in Reno County. In just a couple of weeks, we know that Nextera could potentially put, submit a new CUP for a new wind energy conversion system in our county, as well as any other company that would want to come in. As you have seen during the last CUP, they will pressure or claim that if they get a delay in it, it will ruin the project, and it won't follow their timeline. As a county, we have done nothing so far to protect this scenario from happening again. We need a moratorium until county can have time to review the regulations that we currently have on wind energy, and that we wouldn't have to work and focus on that during this pandemic. The county staff has stated, the accounting planning staff has stated that revisions are needed, and it was in their agenda before the COVID-19 had taken place. However, because of this, they have not been able to meet. So, if a moratorium was implemented, the planning commission would be able to have the time to determine what changes needed to be made. This would prevent any future lawsuits, and then countless hours of testimonies and public hearings. This would also enable a new, new, sorry, a new CUP to go a lot smoother. Wind companies would know what to expect from our county. The time for a moratorium is now, and the benefit would only help our county and give us the time that we need to prevent what happened last year and the year before from happening again. I know it is a challenging time, and I know too that the Nextera has said that we do have world-class wind. If we do have world-class wind, we know that other companies are going to come in. It's just a matter of time. We, as a county, need to set up our own regulations and expectations for these companies, instead of letting them tell us what's best for our county. Again, thank you guys for your time, and please consider doing something to protect us, those of us that live in that portion of the county that are facing the aspect of, you know, these wind companies coming in again, and having no protections or regulations really in place.
Okay, Angela, did you see the recent email that the county administrators sent to your group?
I did, yes.
Okay, well, I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that covers the fact that we would not consider any thing from, and Joe, help me if I word this wrong, but we wouldn't consider any application from Nextera until the legal aspects of what's going on now is finalized.
Yeah, they, they are prohibited from refiling their application in the same territory for a period of one year after their, after the previous application's decision becomes final. It's not final yet. It won't be final until all appeals through the district court and appellate court decisions have been exhausted, and then their clock would start, in my view, in my opinion, for, for one year theoretically, before they could file another one. So, in the event they should file an application involving the same territory, it would not be received or acted upon.
Does that answer your question? You, you specifically mentioned Nextera, and I, I don't think that there's that danger at this point in time of that occurring due to like what the county counselor just said.
I would like to ask one question along with this, because I, I appreciate knowing that it's, it's that period of time, and I think you do too.
Yes, I do.
What about another company? Does that, will that affect another company?
I, I would say, I would say the pending legal proceedings would affect anybody who would attempt to... to obtain a conditional use permit in this territory because there are so many legal issues raised, raised as a result of the pretty furry wind case that have to be resolved by the courts, or I don't see anybody wanting to get involved in that until these issues are decided. I mean, because I, I, I think that the, I anticipate the decision to come out of our Kansas court system will have broad application provide principles as to how this, an application protests and, and, and standards will be applied in the future. And these, these things cost a lot of money. I mean, to, to, you know, you go out and you lease the territory. It takes a lot of time and work just to get to the point where you're in a position to apply for a conditional use permit. We don't have any information to believe that there's any other company preparing leases or options for leases in the territory or in Reno County. I think we probably would be aware of that if it was happening. So as a practical matter, I, I don't, I do not see, for several reasons, that another CUP application will be made in, in the near term.
Does that, does that both apply to our zoned area as well as the unzoned area?
They don't have to apply for a conditional use permit in the unzoned area if, if the project is exclusively in the unzoned area. You'll recall that the project that we did deal with involved both zoned and unzoned areas. So the answer is no.
Okay, thank you.
So can I just, sorry, I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. So you're saying that until the decision has been made, Nextera could not submit a CUP for any, a new CUP for our area? Because the way I have understood from our attorney, he said that one year from the date that you guys denied the C, the conditional use permit, they could refile a new CUP.
I think on a normal, without the appeal, that would be correct. But the appeal means that the decision of this board of county commissioners is not final. It's still pending in the district court system. So.
That explains a lot. Okay, I appreciate that very much. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else that wants to speak to the commission?
Good morning. I am Susan Hilton, 10408 East Smoots Creek Road. I have a couple of things that I wanted to say, totally different topics. I wanted to say thank you for, again, like she did about the COVID-19, for getting ahead of it. I did have a question about the, going to the communities and testing. I just, I wasn't sure. I was out there listening, and maybe he answered it. How, and I don't even know if he's here anymore.
Yeah, next right back here.
Okay, so how would you, you would go like to the whole county and test, and then how would you pay for that? Do we have county staff for that? Or would that be part of the, the state of emergency funding that we would potentially get from the state?
Okay, Susan, why don't you ask all your questions, and then we'll have Nick answer those?
Okay, well, my other is a completely different topic, so you probably don't want to have me answer.
All right, so then, if you want to give Nick some space, yeah, give him some space with the microphone.
Yeah, no problem. Nick Baldetti Reno County Health Department. Yeah, it's, it's just a model that, that internally we've been kicking around, but essentially what we're thinking is we can get a specific allocation through emergency management, sorry, Kansas Department Emergency Management Resource Request Pathways. And if we can receive those, essentially we get the, the test kits for free. I shouldn't say for free. We, we get them from the state. You know, somebody pays for those. But any action right now associated with COVID-19 response would be reimbursable under emergency manage, under the emergency declaration. So we'd be looking at a 75% reimbursement at such time that we get that reimbursement. The state has to get their reimbursement, and then we would get the reimbursement from the state. The model, again, this is all preliminary. We haven't set anything up. These are just discussions, but the thought is, is yes, health department staff or a collaboration amongst the health department and local medical clinics, we would have staff go out to each community potentially, and then we would administer, you know, the first, let's say, 25 asymptomatic people in that community that want to, want to be tested. It's something along that effect. And then we push, we push those tests to a private lab or the state lab. We'd have to figure out and contract with whichever. And then we push that, and if we pushed it to the state lab, there wouldn't be a quote-unquote "cost" associated with it. If we pushed it to a private lab, there would be a cost associated with it, but either way, it would be reimbursable. It's just a matter if it goes to the state, we're not billed for it because that's a state response. If it goes to private, we'd be billed for it, and then it becomes a reimbursable expense. But that's kind of the, in jest, the model that we've discussed, but it is, it is right now, it's simply in the planning stage. We haven't, we haven't moved at all. We've, I, I think I've had one conversation with the administrator in regard to a potential model, something like that, so. Okay.
Thank you, Nick. Susan?
Thank you. That did answer my questions. Do I need to reintroduce myself?
No.
Okay. The second thing I wanted to discuss was, I know there's an upcoming planning and zoning meeting, and if by chance at one of the upcoming planning and zoning meetings, there is a discussion of having a moratorium put in place for all wind facilities, is there a reason, if it gets brought before the commissioners, is there a reason to not act on that? I mean, I, I heard him say that we, he doesn't think that we need it. However, I mean, it's just words on a paper, right? It's not, I mean, there's no, you wouldn't have to actually go out and do anything. So is there a reason, if it is brought before you, is there a reason to not just pursue that?
Well, Susan, I might try to answer your question. There is, in the past, there's been no agreement by the majority of the Reno County Commission to enact a moratorium. And until there's a motion to have a moratorium and a second, I think you know the position of the commission.
Well, maybe it was before you were on?
It was.
Okay.
So there was, Dan Deming was the commissioner at the time, and myself, and also Commissioner Hurst, and the moratorium came up, and I voted against the moratorium. Commissioner Deming voted against it, and Commissioner Hurst voted for it, as I recall. So it was a two-to-one vote, so it didn't pass. What I will just tell you is that I made that decision then. I will also tell you that anything that comes before me, I try to look at with fresh eyes. And so I would consider both issues. I will tell you that not much has changed in my mind. However, I would consider that if, if they make a, if they make a recommendation for moratorium to us, I would consider it, although I will tell you that I would need to see some new and pretty cogent information that would get me to reverse my original opinion from like two years ago.
And I totally respect that. I would think that the last two months is new and cogent information in that basically life for everybody shut down. You know, certainly, we haven't been able to storm your meetings like we previously have done in the past. So it's just, things have, things have changed. And so that in itself, how everything has, time has stood still for the last two months. It really has. I mean, so in that, because the P&amp;Z hasn't even been able to meet, at least not publicly. So those are things that do need to be considered because it, it really does project onto this whole subject. I mean, the moratorium is something that a lot of people would have a say about, but they haven't, just haven't been able to. So, I mean, there's that.
And that's what planning and zoning is going to start working on as they open up again. And according to the county attorney, we have however much longer it takes for this to be resolved by the court system, which could be quite a while then, plus a year. So it seems to me like we've got a year plus a lot of months for the planning and zoning to meet, work with the local community, and come up with a plan for wind energy and how they would like to see that happen. So I don't see, at this point in time, any need for a huge rush on that. But again, if anything comes before me for the planning and zoning, I will look at it with fresh eyes and consider it.
Well, I, I appreciate that you would have fresh eyes because I know you're pretty adamant back in a couple of years ago. So that definitely is important for everybody to know.
I do think that when we, when Commissioner Bush and Commissioner Deming and I were on that commission at the time, that we have gained a lot more knowledge than we had at that time. And I, I think that could play into looking at it. I, I just agree with Commissioner Bush that, that we need to, things have changed a lot from two years ago, and I think if we haven't gained a lot of more knowledge on this all the way through, then we've missed something. But I think we've been presented with oodles and gobs, if I can use that term, of information that we didn't, we were unaware of at that time. I know I certainly have, and I'm sure all of us have.
Okay, thank you, Susan, for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen, for serving our county.
Okay, is there anybody else that wants to address the commission on public comment this morning?
Yes, I invited Deborah Tufel from the chamber to, to a public comment. I would just make a quick introduction. Last week, I presented the idea that the chamber has provided a significant amount of resources in order to help the Reno County administrative part with Nick Baldetti and also with Adam Westire. And we talked a little bit about that. The idea I floated was looking at a contract through the end of the year, starting at $30,000, and let's negotiate down to a number that all of us could agree with. And talking about it more with Randy, but also with Deborah, the chamber is, is pretty adamant that they consider this as their community service and that they have decided that they want to, well, consider this their community service. And so therefore, I contacted Randy. I took it off the agenda item. Deborah offered to write a nice letter, which I believe she did.
She did.
But I, but I asked her to come and speak to you personally. When we have that kind of a commitment for one of our local organizations to help with our administrative body and taking no pay for that, I think it's important the chamber have a chance to speak to you directly and to answer any questions you may have. Deborah, you're up.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Deborah Tufel with the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce at 117 North Walnut. It's good to get to come before you in person again, and I appreciate all of the safe practices you have in place so that we can still do that. And also appreciate the invitation to come and talk about the work of the Reno County Economic Recovery Task Force because work has not stopped in the last few weeks and months since COVID-19. In fact, I think if anything, it's become even more visible and important, the role that a Chamber of Commerce plays in serving this community and serving our members and being a voice for the business community. So just to recap, I think it was April 14th that the chamber board met and discussed formation of the Economic Recovery Task Force. We quickly went to work, meeting with your staff, Commissioner Bush and Nick Baldetti, to talk about what that might look like. And on April 20th, met with Randy Partington and Commissioner Bush and Mr. Baldetti to talk about how, how do we engage the business membership as well as cities and constituents around the community, from nonprofits to the faith-based community, to the childcare community, and a whole realm of small businesses that are impacted by COVID-19, looking towards what would reopening look like, with some uncertainty about what the state's reopening plan would look like. So the week of April 22nd through the 24th, we held 16 subcommittee meetings that engaged all of those constituent groups. That then transitioned into the formation of a representation on a steering committee, and that steering committee has become a 56-member steering committee that at this point has met six times. By May 1st, they put together a phased reopening plan for Reno County, which we are really proud of that work. But we know the work doesn't stop there because the economic recovery piece of this will be long-lasting. So the committee has met twice per week since then. We're really looking forward to hopefully the next phase of reopening under the governor's plan. But I would just like to say that this is a role that the chamber sees as important in serving our membership and in service to our community. And so in that respect, while I really appreciate the words that Commissioner Bush shared last week and the consideration that there could be funding for this role, we see this as our role to the members of our community. So we appreciate that consideration and your kind words and your respect for the work that's been done. I just want to say that the real work in the trenches has been done by my staff. I did ask, just for this exercise, that they track the amount of hours that so far have been spent towards the Recovery Task Force. So through May 8th, they have collectively spent 183 and a half hours as staff working towards this. Coordination of the committees, the communication role, because I think the communication is what has put this community at ease in knowing with certainty where the county stands in COVID-19, and also communication about how the business community can open safely and protect all of their consumers that are coming in their doors every day. So I have to just commend the work of my staff, but then the countless volunteers that have been representatives on that committee that have really dug in and represented their, their peers well. You know, committees from retail and restaurants and the childcare community and the churches in this community that have all put together safe opening plans, not just for their own organization, but they represented the voice of their peers. And so I just have to commend all the work and, and again, appreciate you for giving us the respect that, that we've done a lot of work towards this, but we really do think it's, it's the role that the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce plays. With that, I would say that the work doesn't stop when it comes to economic recovery. Yesterday, you may have heard in Governor Kelly's remarks that the state has some dollars that are eligible under the Community Development Block Grant for cities and counties to apply for. And so based on that announcement yesterday, I communicated back to Randy as well as to constituents at the City of Hutchinson that perhaps we should have a quick task force meeting today to talk about application for that CDBG funding. So that will happen at 11 o'clock today, and, and hopefully this meeting wraps up in time that Randy can be a part of that. But if not, I'll, I'll give him a recap. So with that, thank you very much for letting me come today and just share some public comment.
Thank you, Deborah. I, I applaud the chamber's effort of being a community member and working with the county and the city and the schools, and it, it only happens when we all work together towards a unified end. I appreciate your, and if, if you did all that work in 183 hours, I think those people were very affecting.
I have a great team. But I will say there were plenty of nights and evenings and even some weekend hours spent on it, but we want our economy to reopen again quickly. We know that the economic impact of this is probably even greater than the health impact at this point, and we're, we're glad that this community is staying safe, but we also want the voice of the businesses to be heard that we, we need to get back to business too. So thank you for allowing us to help that happen in a, in a safe manner.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you. And if I was a member of the media and I wanted a story of how community comes together and businesses and individuals come together, I'd be writing a page to the New York Times or somewhere to explain exactly how, how a rural community, I think we're rural semi, is, is putting all people together to come up with a plan that is useful to not only economic recovery, but also the health of the community.
I think we're a poster child for how to do it right. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Deborah.
All right, thanks.
Okay, moving on to item seven, discussion and action items. Item A and is Horizon's Mental Health. I request that Michael Garrett come to present his quarterly report. And Mike, we might reintroduce you when we get to item B for the budget request.
Okay, that'll be fine. Good morning. I, as Commissioner said, I'm going to try to do two things. The first will be a quarterly report to the commissioners and provide you an update as to where things are at with Horizons. I sent you the March financials that have the month and the year to date, and I just want to review those really quickly with you. There's, about the third line down is the total patient revenue, and the ones on the left are what I'll go through first, was about $992,000 for the month. We had $232,000 in total deductions, which is less than what we had budgeted, but the revenue was less than what we had budgeted as well. And it was less than where we were last year at this time as well. And then we had the net patient revenue of $760,000, $760,000, and then the other operating revenue of $411,000. So the total operating revenue for the month was just under 1.2 million. So the total operating revenue for the month was just under 1.2 million. And you can see the expenses there. And then about halfway down is 1.1 million was our total expenses for the month. So there was an EBITDA of 69,434. And then we had depreciation, so there was an operating margin of just under $58,000 for the month, which was about 4.94%. So that was really positive, and I'll share some other information here in a little bit. But we moved to what we call telecommuting. We moved many staff home, beginning in that third week in March, and providing services over telehealth services, and I'll talk more of that. So I didn't know how that was going to impact our financials. So when I got this, that second week in April, I was pleasantly surprised by these numbers. And then the year to date, I'll run through those quickly. Gross patient revenue, about 9.7 million. We had budgeted 11.4, and that was predominantly because we haven't been able to open our Learn and Play Therapeutic Center for Kids. We've remodeled a wing in the Old Dillon Living Center on the hospital campus, and we had a lot of challenges, I think I shared with the commission, with the State Fire Marshal's Office, getting things in, getting them here, getting all those inspections. That was a learning experience. And then we had KDHE have to come through and do their inspections, and then the pandemic crisis hit, and so we haven't been able to open that. We have that scheduled to open July 1, though, and you'll see that reflected in our budget for next year. So we're really hopeful that we'll be able to move forward in that timeline. The contractual adjustments and the total deductions totaled about 2.4 million. There again, less than what we had budgeted due to the revenue not being as much, and it was about $400,000 less than it was last year. Net patient revenue, about 7.3 million. Other operating revenue was about 3 million. So total operating revenue for the first nine months of our fiscal year was just under 10.4 million. And our expenses, just almost at $10 million, a tad bit under that. And you'll notice on the expenses, salaries and benefits continue to be the highest line items. We are a professional organization, and so we are going to have very significant personnel costs. That led to an EBITDA of 426,000 for the year. Depreciation was 113, so leaves an operating margin of $313,000, or about 3%. There again, we have three months left in the year, and not sure how April's going to go, how May is going to go. Before I move into what we've been doing, I will tell you that our board approved our budget for FY '21 last Thursday at their May board meeting. That goes before the Hutchinson Regional Healthcare System Board on June, or May 27. And if they approve that budget, then that would go into effect July 1. And I'll make that available to you all for your consideration in the funding requests. As I mentioned, any questions about the financials?
How about this? There's a lot of data here.
Yes.
So is there anything in particular that you're really concerned about? I mean, I know there's a lot of concerns out there with revenue streams and everything, but is there something that's just jumping at you right now, making you go, wow, this could be a significant problem for us in X number of months? See what I'm saying?
Yes, I do. The two things that come to my mind right off the top, Commissioner, are workforce. We're developing a plan to transition back to our office setting, and a lot of staff are very anxious and scared about that.
Did you do week on, week off, or furloughs?
Well, we're considering all of those things. We haven't furloughed anybody.
So everybody's still kind of getting it done, all essential services?
Right. Right. And that's really what we've tried to do. We didn't stop doing business. We just did a remodel of how we were delivering those services.
Right.
And related to that is, we had to work very hard as an association of community mental health centers with KDads and KDHE to get authorization to provide those services via telehealth, whether that's televideo or telephonic, telephone. And that was a big challenge in and of itself. That was set to expire May 31st. We were able to convince the state that that needed to be extended, at least through the governor's plan, so they've extended that to June 30th, the end of June. So whether that will continue or not, I guess there's two things with that. One is, I think we've realized that for some people, for some services, this is a really good way to deliver care. We have an individual that I kind of use as an example, a 73-year-old person that we had to teach how to use Zoom, and we had to teach all of our consumers and our staff, a lot of them.
And staff.
And once we got that video going, he said, oh, this is wonderful. I don't know if I'll ever come back to the center. And so, you know, there's a group that may have transportation needs, physical problems, or other challenges of getting to the center that this is a real good model for. So will we be able to convince the state to allow that to continue across time is going to be a real significant question. And then kind of with your comment about, we're looking at, how do we manage the foot traffic through our building and maintain social distancing and all the guidelines that are going to be in place? Because we do about 10,000 to 11,000 services a month. And so you can imagine the amount of foot traffic. Our physicians and our medical staff see three people an hour, and there's seven of them. And so just in that part of our building, the amount of congestion in our waiting room alone, we have to try to manage. So we're looking at, with our med staff, for example, can half of them work from home in the morning and the other half in the office, and then flip that in the afternoon? So we just decrease the number of people coming through our office by half. So we're trying to consider all of those variables. How can we provide a safe environment for our employees as well as our consumers and not compromise care? Did that answer your question?
Oh, very well. Yes. And mental health, I would think, with some clients would be tricky to do via Zoom, but with others might be very successful.
Right.
And that really could increase your reach. I have a salesman who basically has decided after working from home with Zoom that he's going to cut his travel in half because he finds himself to be just as successful using Zoom meetings, and I'm seeing more and more applications with that. I mean, I was on a Zoom meeting with one of my doctors in Kansas City. So that saved me three hours up, a 45-minute meeting, and three hours back. So I think there's just a lot of application for, especially in mental health, some clients, but maybe not all.
Right. And we're still having some clients in our building with people that are in crises. The police bring them to us, or people that walk in and are in crisis. We try to do those televideo, but some people are in need of that face-to-face service. And then we have to take all of the precautions of whether it's wearing masks, whether it's wiping down services, sanitizing everything, and trying to prepare for that next one. So I think it's, can we build a model that everybody feels safe functioning in? And if we can, then the workforce issue may not become the problem, but I'm concerned that if we can't do the one, the workforce will become a problem.
Okay. Michael, a couple of questions. On your teleconference scene, are you finding that the clients have access to computer and understand how to use it?
That's a great question because we have a large segment that don't, that don't have access to internet and don't have Wi-Fi access. We have several that don't have phones, even for telephone service. And so we've even provided those devices to individuals just so we can have access to them. And so that's a concern because the state right now is wanting to say, well, we can move these back to televideo, but we aren't going to do the telephone. But there's a large number of people that don't have access to services. I think the school found that out when they were trying to transition, and they ended up providing Chromebooks for a lot of their students. But that was only part of it. You can provide the hardware, but if they don't have the access, it's not going to work. That's a challenge that we're going to have.
Okay. The other question I'd have is, I would assume that you would have had some or maybe significant different cases due to the COVID situation. I'm hearing that people being at home, all the stresses going on. Have you seen your client base change somewhat due to this virus situation?
Not yet. I anticipate that.
But you haven't seen it yet.
Not yet. I've had a conversation, communication with Chief Hooper, and he said that, you know, because I asked him, are his calls for mental health issues, substance abuse issues increasing? And he said, kind of, but he referenced those in more of domestic calls, that they're called out a lot more on domestic calls that are complicated by mental health and substance abuse problems. And one of the big things that we're really trying to get out to our people is remain connected to your treatment team. Don't stop. And I think for those first, well, I don't know, two to three weeks, everybody just hunkered down. I mean, they, you know, people weren't going to go anywhere or do anything. And that was real critical of making sure that they remain connected to us. That was our first challenge. So I anticipate that. The other thing that I am concerned about is substance abuse problems during that time. You know, there's the videos, I think we all saw, that when they identified there were shelter-at-home places all across the nation, lines at liquor stores just developed two or three blocks long to be able to get, you know, so you're thinking, okay, is this going to breed something? Is this going to develop something? So that's a concern as well.
Have you done anything, or do you feel that you need to do anything? I feel extremely sorry for our nursing home residents that have had to stay in place. They haven't been out at all.
Right.
I would think that their mental health would be stressed by this situation. Have you done anything with the retirement homes?
We provide many services to many of the nursing homes here in town. We started that prior to the pandemic, a year ago, two years ago, and we've continued that through telehealth. Because they, and very understandably so, they've kind of shut their doors to everybody but healthcare providers. And so not to put them at risk, we just continue to do that through televideo.
Is transportation through ARCAT working pretty well with the situations you've had?
Yes, it is. It is. And we've even asked for some leniency on that because we have many homeless individuals and transportation problems that, can we use some of those ARCAT passes to help them just get to the grocery store and back, just so they can get needed supplies? And so that's been very beneficial. Yeah, that's a great program for us and our consumers, very beneficial.
Michael, you always make a very good quarterly report when you come to see us. I want to acknowledge how ready you are to address the commission. Are there any other questions before he moves on to his budget request for next year?
Not for me. Thank you.
One thing I would inform you about is that last week, Lerner State Hospital changed their admission policy. They're no longer willing to take voluntary admissions. And what they've done is developed, I think it's five different, I'm going to call them wards, to, you know, that this unit will have 20 people, this unit will have 20 people. So they're kind of staging people. When new patients come in, they're quarantined over in this unit, and then they progress through if they don't show symptoms. And I really think that that was in preparation for what's happened in southwest Kansas, in Ford County, Fannie, and Seward County. They really anticipated an onslaught, but that reduced their bed capacity from 90 to 72. And so it reduced it by 18, and consequently, that's put more pressure on units like we have at Hutch Hospital, Prairie View, and some of the other units. The people at KDads that made this decision said that they notified all the sheriff's office, county attorneys. And so I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware that the sheriff and Keith should know that, but that still may come up, and we're trying to find ways around that any way we can. How long that will be in place, I don't know. I don't know. So.
Thank you. Why don't you move ahead to your Mental Health 2021 budget request?
Well, I've provided you with a lot of documentation, four different documents in addition to the requests that I had. And I guess I draw your attention to just a couple of them to try to help you understand why I requested the 5% increase. The first one is a number of self-insured individuals that are seen here in Reno County, and that's referenced as Document 1. And when I have got it back to 2008, Reno County, we were serving 3,400 people in Reno County at the time, and 790 of them didn't have a payer source, so about 23% of them. Last year, we served about 4,900, and about 1,700 didn't have a payer source, so 34%, 34.6% of their, of the consumers did. So a pretty significant increase in the number, in the proportion of people that we serve versus those that are uninsured. I made a comment in my narrative about our electronic health record doesn't have the ability to differentiate underinsured from uninsured. If you have insurance, you have insurance, is what happens. But what we've seen is more people having insurance, but what they have is insurance through the Health Information Exchange with really high deductibles, some $5,000 to $7,000. And so in my terms, those are pretty much catastrophic plans and really don't pay for outpatient services. So they aren't even included in that document, those what we consider underinsured. Those are purely just uninsured individuals. The second document is the funding analysis for Reno County, and I think I provided you the one from 2008 through 2020. And it started with a cumulative change of 7.6% of 410,000. But when I pulled my older records, that was from, you know, I think one thing that happens with wearing a mask, you realize how many times you lick your fingers to move papers? It's just amazing. You can't do that. It was 378,000 then, and so that 13.9% is accumulated across time. And so that, there's been a 5% increase from 2008 to 2020, and that occurred in 2018. I just noticed on here I have 2108, but it's 2018 is when that increase incurred. So it's been a while since that increased, and that, the funding has not gone along with that. The other thing that I threw together real quickly yesterday, I have some information on our average cost per hour for all of our direct service staff. So those are individuals that are below bachelor's level, that are bachelor's level, master's level, PhD, MD, all of our staff put together. We average cost per billable hour is $148.71. The state average is $176.28, and the national average is $164.65. So the state is higher than the national average, but Horizons is below both of them in terms of what it costs per billable hour. So we're really trying to manage efficiently as to the resources that we have.
Okay. So just, so your cost to provide a billable hour service is $143?
$148.71.
Wow, that number?
Yep.
Which is less than the state?
Yes.
And this is, you kind of wrap up like offices and things like that?
All overhead.
All overhead, operations costs, all of that?
Yes.
And so you're good $30, $40 underneath the state average.
Right.
That's great.
Right.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Yeah, we keep track of that even down to the billable code, that we know what it costs for Dr. Tan for a session of MedCheck and what it costs Dr. Amy Perrin. The last document that I had was the number of billable hours. Well, I also included February financials, but we talked about March, so I'm not going to go over that. It's the number of billable hours in Reno County on Document 4, and that goes back to 2011 when we had 97,741. And then in 2019, it was 107,779. So there's been an increase in billable hours, and if you think back to the self-pay, a lot of those are self-pay individuals. When people come to us and are self-paid, we put them on a sliding fee scale based upon household income and the number of dependents that live on that income. And then if that's a hardship, they can also apply for a further fee reduction request, and I review all of those. We have several people that do that. I probably review 15 of those a month, probably, that are requesting a reduction in their fees. I probably review 15 of those a month probably that are requesting a reduction in their fees.
So you brought up underinsured. So if somebody has like a $5,000 deductible, do you put them on a sliding scale so they can be treated like self-pay?
No.
Or how does that work?
No, because that's an agreement they have with their insurance company. We won't violate that agreement.
Okay.
Now, if they have, what, what we find, there are certain of our services that their insurance company won't cover. And we call some of those rehab services, so like case management. So if you have Blue Cross and Blue Shield, that one will cover case management. So we will apply the sliding fee scale to those set of services, but not the ones that are covered by Blue Cross and Blue Shield.
Okay.
If that makes sense?
Okay. So if I show up and I'm with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and I got a $5,000 deductible, you'll bill me for the full amount?
Correct.
And that'll go to me personally, and then I have to pay it, and it goes, and then I submit it to Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and it goes against my deductible?
Right. Yeah, we'd go ahead and submit it to your insurance, but they would send you an EOB and say they weren't going to pay it.
But then if I can't afford it, do I just not come back?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and what we do then is we develop a payment plan that'll work with you. We try to make everything.
So, so it's not sliding scale, but you will work out a payment plan over time?
Oh, of course.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, it's not, pay us what you owe us today or we don't schedule another appointment.
Okay.
Not at all.
Glad you clarified that.
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Might mention to the commissioners that the request from Horizon's Mental Health for our budget request is different than the sheet that's been given to us by the county. I believe the sheet from the county indicates no change. And Mr. Garrett's suggesting that he's asking for a 5% increase this year.
Where would probably I get that result?
Yeah, I think that was in the letter that I sent, the last paragraph.
Okay, any more questions of Michael Garrett?
Don't have any.
Not thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Very much appreciate it. Our next presentation this morning will be from Tech, Brenda Maxey and others. Brenda, I'm sorry you had to wait so long for your presentation this morning.
Not a problem.
Our meetings seem to get longer and longer. I'm blamed as chairman for that, and I don't think that's a legitimate issue. Brenda, welcome.
The buck stops at your desk.
I see.
This isn't the federal government.
We were actually listening to the meeting on the phone out in the hallway anyway, which is what we would have been doing at the office, so it worked out well. Brenda Maxey, President and CEO of Tech Incorporated, 10 East First Avenue. Thank you for having me here this morning. Always happy to come in and talk about tech. Just a brief overview on our proposal that we sent to you a couple of months ago. We are looking at funding our employment, which includes our work center, our technology center, our adult life skills program, as well as our art studio. We also fund our residential program, which is currently serving people in over 45 community sites. We're supporting people living in group homes, their own homes, apartments, including four of our homes that are dedicated to retirement and end-of-life services. Our family services are responsible for stabilizing family homes for those individuals that continue to live in the family home, navigating through the complex systems of accessing resources to getting people involved in the services that they need. And it is designed to be proactive as opposed to reactive when working with these families. Tech will, however, go into a moment of crisis with those family services as well. Our children's services includes coordinating of specialized medical care, including transportation, overnight accommodations, purchasing accessible, durable medical equipment, which can be wheelchairs, walkers, specialized shoes. We partner with several mental health providers to address not only the mental health needs of those children, but also behavioral supports for those kids that may have challenging behavioral issues. A few comments that I wanted to be able to make in terms of what has transpired from the time we submitted our proposal until today. And the biggest of that is obviously the impact of COVID-19. On March 18th, we ended up closing all of our day services as well as our offices. This forced our residential programs then to operate 24/7. And that was strictly for those individuals that were involved in our residential program. There are still a number of people that either live in their own homes, live at home with family, that at this point are not getting any of their day services, and we have been without now since March 18th. We have looked at a variety of different reopening plans because as of today, we made the decision to remain closed. Majority of our settings are congregate settings, so we have large groups of people being served in what I consider large areas, but obviously not large enough. We took a very conservative approach because at this point, we have no staff and we have no person served that has tested positive for COVID-19. We've made the decision to close until at least June 1st, at which time we will reassess the situation both at Tech as well as in our community and see what we believe is going to be in the best interest of those individuals served. This has obviously created a huge financial impact on the organization. From the date of closure in March until April 1st, we incurred a loss of $45,000. Our April loss for the closing of the day programs, and we also ended up canceling two fundraisers that month, we incurred a loss of $69,000. Our projection for May with the closure of all of our day programs and also the cancellation of one fundraiser is projected to be $72,000 for the month. Assuming that we can get our day programs and our day services up and running in some capacity for the month of June, we are still looking at the potential of having to cancel three additional fundraisers for the remainder of 2020. We have one of those scheduled for August, one of those scheduled for September, and our largest fundraiser of the year, which is scheduled in November. Again, assuming we can get our day services up and running in some capacity during the month of June, we are still looking at experiencing, experiencing a loss per calendar year 2020 of $300,000. We're also uncertain at this point what type of financial impact Tech is going to potentially be a part of as the legislature goes back into session. And certainly with the fiscal impact that COVID-19 has placed upon our state, we believe that there is a likelihood that that revenue loss to the state will also impact the services that Tech provides. In terms of the economy rebounding, I think it's anyone's best guess at this point as to how fast that's going to occur. We just don't know, so it's difficult to anticipate long-term how quickly we're going to build a rally from the losses that we have incurred and are planning to incur. And of course, being an election year, we don't know what that could look like for us either. Our mail delivery request was asking us to be held harmless from last year's allocation. And I again would request that, actually, I would urge you to consider our full request of 510,000. Any additional loss of revenue for our organization would be devastating at this point. I'd be happy to stand for any questions that you all may have.
Brenda, I think you bring out the point that every organization is going to be affected by what we're going through at this point in time. Your loss for April and March and April, is that due to not being able to charge Medicare for those programs? Is that basically?
Right. We're not able to bill for the services that we provide.
If you had to service, you would be billing somebody for that?
Correct.
I see.
Correct. And then also the three fundraisers that we had, one in, actually two in April and one in May.
Well, hopefully you can have your November fundraiser.
We're hoping. We're hoping. It just seems, you know, it's, there's so many unknowns. And even if everything opens up and we're able to have larger gatherings, this is typically a fundraiser for 350 people, is that truly then going to be the responsible thing to do within the community?
Good point.
And will people come?
Exactly.
I mean, people love Tech and support it, but will they come?
Right.
If they don't feel safe?
Right.
Are there questions of Tech?
Help me understand a little bit here. I think, I'm not familiar as Commissioner Bush and maybe you are. Your total revenue is expected to be a little over $7 million. And with the specific program expenditures that, that are separated out with the 510,000 that we appropriated for, for this last year, your total program expenses leaves a $2,285,000 difference. How does, where does that, what all is that used for? I'm just curious. Help me understand a little bit with.
That goes to support all of the programs in which Tech operates, our residential program, our employment program, our retirement programs, anything that we do to serve the individuals with developmental disabilities.
Okay, that's like your housing programs and so forth?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. But I think, Ron, your question is Brenda better explain the difference between your revenue of 7.1 million and your program expenses of 4.8. Is that an overhead expense that you're not showing here?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, because there is a considerable difference there.
Two million, 2.8, 2.285 million dollars and.
Right, that would include all of our other expenses, including our administrative expenses, our marketing expenses, human resources.
Okay. Is that, better explain that, Ron?
That helps.
Right, what you are seeing here is strictly our program expenses.
And that's why I noted that that was program expenses. Doesn't it take your employer employee benefits and, and then?
Correct.
And the, the cost of maintaining housing?
Facilities, a fleet of vehicles, all of those things.
Okay, other questions? Thank you, Brenda, for being here. And again, I apologize for keeping you so long.
Very good. Thank you for having us.
Okay, I'd like to move to item 7D, the extension of the disaster document. And I believe that is document 2020-12. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion that we extend the Reno County Resolution declaring Reno County a local disaster emergency, which is resolution number 2020-12, as presented by staff.
Second? There's motion and second. Is there any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Okay, moving on to, how, how long is this executive session supposed to last?
He says, he's giving me a motion. He says 30 minutes, but they're never 30 minutes. They're always twice that.
Okay, I, I think we better take a five-minute break before we go on to county administrator reports. Five minutes. We'll meet again at 10 till 11. Tuesday, May 12th meeting at this point in time. Our next item is the county administrator report.
Okay, just a couple of quick updates. Deborah had already mentioned it, but the CDBG money is available for communities, cities and counties up to $300,000. And some of it's, there's two programs, one's economic development, the other's is a meal programs. So as she mentioned, there's a task force meeting this morning, and I'll get with Deborah to find out more information on what that group discussed and how Reno County, what our part in maybe a CDBG application would be for businesses in the county or for meal programs.
So who's this, who's this task force? Who's on this?
The planner for the city is one of them. I believe the mayor of the city of Hutch, I was on it, and then Deborah, and I'm, those are the names I remember seeing.
Okay.
The email came in late last night, so I, I didn't look at it. The name's too close.
Okay, that's fine. I just, just curious.
So I can get that, I can get you that information though.
Just so long as we're represented.
Right.
I think I'd be very diligent, Randy, in applying for anything that we can apply for and dot the i's and cross the t's and the, and that's different money than the 1.2 billion that the government, the state of Kansas was given?
This is part, this comes from the CARES money, so I don't know.
No, I think the CARES is what I'm talking about, which is the 1.2 billion that the state received.
And this may be a portion of it, but the CDBG is not applicable to the metro cities and counties of over, I think, 500,000. So Johnson and Sedwick Counties wouldn't be eligible. This would be the other parts of that money?
Right.
For the rest of the state.
Well, I think Johnson and Sedwick got their own allocation.
I already heard.
Sedwick County got $99 million. So this is a case, I guess, I wish that we were a little bigger county. Other items, Randy?
Yeah, and, and just, I guess for Commissioner Bush's question, the people that were on the email for the meeting, were the mayor, John Dave Line, Ryan at the city, and then myself, so along with chamber staff. So I will make sure that I get more information so that Reno County has a say or gets a part in this.
Yes, please.
Then courthouse opening and annex, the annex opening. In talking with some staff members and the district judge, we're looking at trying to open up the courthouse and the annex a little bit more to the public next Monday. Want to kind of see if you're, you guys are okay with that. But what we're doing for safety is we're bringing back the full staff of the security, and we're going to provide them with masks and gloves. We have thermometers. The district court had requested anyone coming in for court be, have a health screening, couple of questions, and then the thermometer scan the forehead to make sure their temperature is not above 100.4 degrees. The same at the annex, one of the VinTech employees was going to go over to the annex to help keep the spacing, the six-foot spacing, along with 10 people in that, the treasurer's area. As they've been kind of left out of that building, the citizens for a while, a lot of them may want to just kind of come in, but to kind of keep order, we'll have security over there for a little while also. And we'll also provide masks when needed and gloves for them. The citizens for district court, I think they are, our judge, our chief administrator judge is requiring that they, that all clients, I believe, have masks when they're in the courtrooms.
Is that something that we could put on the website so that people look at the web, if people look at the website, that they'll have that information?
Yes, we will put it out on social media and the website, and I'll have a memo later this week about that, or press release, just to let people know what they're needing and what parts are open, were technically open. The courthouse and annex are open by appointment right now only, but this will open it completely up.
With the temperature check, just real quick, there's been a big discussion about 100.4 or 100. And there's a lot of science out there where they're just saying 100.4 in Reno County through our group. We've just made the decision that if it's 100 or more, then the person is not allowed to go to work or participate or has to leave. And I don't know if that 100.4 or something, they're stuck on, like it's a state thing that came down through the courts, or we could just go to 100 or more, which is what Reno County is using for everything else.
We'll probably do the 100. I'll talk with them a little bit on this. The one concern or issue we still need to work out is if an employee or, if a client's here for court and they do have a temperature, we're going to work on a mechanism this week to find out what the. to find out what they needed to do so that court, the court knows they showed up for their court hearing before we just turn them away.
Right.
So there are a couple logistical things we're still working on, but we'll look at the 100 degrees.
Okay. I mean, that's what Nick's recommending, 100 or more. Okay.
There could be a lot of people coming to court because they've been backed up for two months, so I don't quite know what to expect at the entrance in terms of volumes of people at certain times.
And who's going to be doing these screens where they ask a couple of questions? I mean, what if I'm 98.7 and I go, oh, yeah, my brother has tested positive. Do I get turned away? Who decides that?
That, we're working on the logistics this week.
I'll bet you are.
The court's going to have other people directing their clients of where they need to go, what courtrooms.
Oh, I can't imagine.
What their case is, so I'll be working with the judge, judges to find a process that works.
Does that potential issues around speedy trial and things like that? I mean, I don't know, I don't know that part.
There are no trial, well, there are no jury trials, but there could be, there could be speedy trial. I would think that if the, if the defendant would not be allowed to go to the courtroom, then that information needs to be communicated to the court and probably then to that person's legal counsel so that whatever procedural steps need to be made to preserve the 180-day rule would be made. It would obviously be at the fault of the defendant, you know, his health situation, precipitating. I don't mean, I mean fault in the sense that is, it would be hard to claim a 180-day rule when you were the cause for not being able to try the case. But those are, as Randy pointed out, there are some logistics issues because certainly people, people are ordered to appear on aid and execution of judgments, and they don't appear, the attorney asks for a bench warrant for the person who didn't appear, or if you don't appear in front of a court for your first appearance or hearing or whatever, it's, there's an arrest warrant. So I would, I would think that probably the court system needs to help in that regard. I mean, make sure that those communications are properly made, so Randy's appropriately working on the logistics right now.
Oh, sure. Are we going to start, okay, just to get into it, so are we going to start having somebody at the back door for staff coming in that's going to be checking temperatures for all of us with fobs?
No.
And ask questions?
Right now, we haven't, we haven't really restricted employees to the building for work at this point. I know the district attorney, he, he does have a thermometer. He is doing that with his employees, but that's not, countywide, we haven't told every department that's what they need to do, since we're pretty much full staff anyways. Nothing's changed from next week versus today, so.
So this is specifically from the judicial system?
This is the judicial system and then the comfort from the county treasurer, county clerk, for some of the clients that they're now going to be open to also at the annex.
So the annex, everybody will be checked?
Yes.
Coming in and out, including staff?
The staff will be checking themselves, yes. I mean, each department head will check them. They already have the questionnaire.
Okay.
So then the new thing would be the thermometer, the temperature check. They still have the questions of, have you had travel? Have you been exposed? How do you feel?
Okay. So some county departments are going to be doing it with elected officials based on their comfort level, but if it's not an elected official group, then we are not doing temperature checks, like Public Works isn't doing it.
Right.
Human Resources isn't doing it.
Right. Correct.
The landfill, the landfill's not doing?
Health Department, they do health screenings every morning also.
But the health department is doing it.
They're doing health screening. I'm not sure about the temperatures.
Okay, but like the landfill is not?
Correct.
Okay. Seems like we all got to get on one page.
Yeah, I mean, we can work on that. We haven't been at this point, but if we're going to do it for the courthouse and annex, we can make the others start doing it now.
I just, I just bring it up for discussion.
Okay.
I'd leave that up to the different directors as much as possible in discussion. I agree with you, Ron. I, I'm not sure that we all have to be on the exact same page on that, but in my opinion, let's leave that up to the county administrator to. Who to?
And I'm still working on the logistics as we're going to start opening up more next week, so.
And if we do come out with a problem, that can be changed.
I'll be curious to hear your decision.
Okay. The other item I have, just to let you know, the house, there's a few house committees at the state that are going to start meeting virtually this week. Today, the taxation committee, which the information I have says they'll focus on property tax transparency and waiving interest and penalties for delayed payments. They meet at 3:30 today and Thursday. I think there's a YouTube channel for the legislature that they're supposed to be on, but just kind of giving you an update. That's, that's the one that has Senate Bill 294 in front of it that it still has a chance to get passed this year.
That hasn't been passed?
It passed the Senate, but it's sitting at the House committee.
Okay, I was not aware of that. I assumed that that was a done deal.
It passed unanimously at the Senate.
Yes.
But now it's, it's sitting in this committee that they may start talking about this week or may finish talking. Right before the state shut down, they were going to have the public hearing for that bill, but that was canceled because of the shutdown of the legislature, so it's still on there.
They're just meeting for one day, right?
Their meet.
The committee had a time.
Yeah, the full legislature is one day.
The full legislature to prove, approve all of this stuff, the House just.
One day.
One day.
Yes.
To get whatever they can get done, done.
Right, but the House has appropriations, commerce, labor, taxation, and judiciary meeting this week.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, Randy?
No, that's all.
Okay. Commissioner Bush, do you have anything this morning?
I do. I'm going to give you just, I'm trying to make it a brief update. It'll be a brief update. We won't brief it up, be brief it up for the chair, but it'll be a brief update. I told you last week that I was going to meet with the election staff. So Randy and I met with the county clerk, Donna Patton, and with the deputy election officer, Jenna Fager, talked about the upcoming election. They are all over it. They gave me this list of 11 areas that they're looking at. For the commission piece, that is something for to be thinking about is, most of this is all the things that you would assume that they'd be doing around making poll workers feel safe to come in. They are not sure how many poll workers are going to choose to not come in. Other states, that's been a problem. Hopefully, by the, by the first election that we have to do, which I believe is in August, a lot of those fears will be subsided. They're going to be communicating with them to bring them in. One of the issues is that they're looking at doing a more aggressive push on advanced balloting and mail-in ballots. Now, mail-in ballots come with a cost, but they've got several strategies to get those costs very low. The good news is that this year, they have $60,000, which we're still looking into limitations and restrictions, but they have $60,000 available to reimburse the county for additional elections costs related to COVID-19. However, as we make changes this year, we will not have those dollars next year. So you'll be looking at potentially a larger budget item for these services for elections than you were looking at in the past. That's going to be worked out. I spoke with them about coming and meeting with us after they kind of figured a lot of these things out, probably in the next two or three weeks. August may seem like a way away, but it's not. And so some of the decisions have to be made, and I want to make sure that the county commission is involved in this. But it was a very good meeting, and the election staff has always impressed me. We've never had complaints, and they are working very aggressively on a lot of these different items that they'll be presenting to you probably in the next two or three weeks. That's all I have.
Thank you, Bob, for that report. My understanding is the state does not allow an election to be all by mail. Is that your understanding?
Yes, yes.
You can give the ability to get a mail ballot, but the state of Kansas does not allow.
So without getting into the weeds, what they would do is they would have a mailer that would go out to you that says, would you like a mail-in ballot? And then you say yes, and then they would mail you a mail-in ballot that, and then one of the issues is, is it already pre-stamped or not? The idea is that if you ask for a mail-in ballot, you will, you will mail it in, and so then you'd fill it out and mail it in. But then the poll places still have to be open, and we have 32 polling sites. And a good example is if you look at the pay for today, in the, I think it's the opinion section, Kathy Moore was served as a poll worker in Castleton, and they had, she said they had 32 people come in and vote. Well, if we're able to get half of those to do by mail, and we still have to have it open, we still have to have staff, we still have to pay for that, and we still have to provide those 32 polling stations. And so how this gets worked out is, well, the devil's in the details as always.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Ron, do you have items today?
I hope that the polls are always open at some point and never get closed so people can go in and vote. That's my opinion, and I think that can be handled effectively, and I think our clerk's department can handle that.
Absolutely. We just have to pay for it.
Yep.
Okay.
I want to thank Senator Ed Berger for sending his postcard out this last, well, we just got it here yesterday, I think, informing some of the people that were self-employed specifically with both an 800 number and a website to go to, to find out what they have opportunities for their additional supplemental income from through the federal and the state. So I thought that was excellent that he got out there, and if nobody has gotten that, just get ahold of Senator Berger. I'm sure that he can provide that information to you. The other thing is, I believe this week is Peace Officers Week, and so recognize those of the police and the sheriff's department that have had, had their hands full with this handling the pandemic that we've had. So I want to thank them for all their work, and unfortunately, we couldn't have that big day out that we normally have, so. That's it.
Okay. I think I'll forego with the items I had down, and we're ready for your motion, Bob.
I'd like to make a motion that we recess into executive session for discussion with the board's legal counsel on a privileged legal matter pertaining to real estate tax foreclosure for a period of 60 minutes, following which the board will reconvene a regular session and immediately adjourn. No decision of the board is anticipated or will be undertaken. The county counselor has asked that county administrator, Randy Partington, remain for the executive session, which means the executive session will start at 11:10 and end at 12:10.
Or before.
Or before.
Or before. Do my best. We have it before.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Sal.
Yes.